Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on September the 17th at 7:13 PM. Want to thank everybody for coming out here with us this evening. We will start our meeting with open ceremony. Please join Ms. Fowler in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, please silence your cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So now, the first item on our agenda for this evening are appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Owlesley Junior High, Assistant Principal for Anderson Elementary, and Assistant Principal for Berry Elementary.
Dr. Rice?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Dr. Rice, a second by Ms. Walton. Any questions? Hearing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Owlesley Junior High, Mr. Tariq Thay Whitmire. Mr. Whitmire attended Texas A&amp;M University in Prairie View, Bachelor of Science in Health Sciences, attended Lamar University for Master of Ed in Educational Administration. Most recently was a Special Education Teacher in Garland ISD at Lakeview Centennial Collegiate Academy, has been a Special Education Teacher in Dallas ISD as well. Thay, welcome.
Thank you. First and foremost, I would like to thank President Mays and the school board. I would like to thank Dr. Cavassos for giving me this opportunity in Arlington ISD. I would like to thank Bill Hollinger. I would like to thank, special thanks to Dr. Tracy Brown. I'm in her Future School Leaders Network, and it's such a great honor to learn from the best. FSLN, that's the definition of building the capacity of leadership. I would like to thank my principal, Mr. Toperser. He's such a great leader, and he gave me such a warm welcome at Owlesley Junior High, and he's such a great communicator, and I can't wait to learn as much as I can from Mr. Toperser. And I'm very excited to be working with Keisha Edwards and Amanda Thomas, my Assistant Principals. I've been there for a few days, and it feels like a family already, and that family dynamic is very important. And I would like to thank my family, my mom and my sister, they're here today because they supported me through this journey. They supported me through this journey, and we all know that education is a lifelong journey. And I can't wait, and I'm very excited to start my journey of being a principal with Arlington ISD and Owlesley Junior High. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Anderson Elementary, Ms. Maria Delgado. Maria attended University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies, most recently the Campus Testing Facilitator at Goodman, has been a pre-K 6th Grade Special Education Inclusion Teacher at Goodman, Campus Testing Facilitator at Goodman, has taught Kinder, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd Grade Bilingual at Knox Elementary as well. Maria, congratulations.
Thank you so much, President Mays, and members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. It's with a full heart that I'm here this evening. I just want to thank you all for this opportunity. It's been a long journey, and I've learned so much along the way from many talented and wonderful people here in the district. I also would like to thank Dr. Jarco and Ms. Perigine for seeing something in me beyond the interview. I really look forward to working alongside them and continuing to learn from them and to grow professionally. I would like to thank the Anderson staff for all their support, for welcoming me to the team. I'm really excited for what lies ahead. And I also would like to thank the Goodman Elementary staff for four wonderful years, many good people, and thank you to Ms. Selena Elizondo for giving me my first learning opportunity outside of the classroom, as well as a special thank you to Ms. Christina Hernandez. She's been a wonderful mentor and an exceptional role model for me, and I really appreciate her as well. I also want to go way back to my Vita Knox days, because that's where I spent my first 10 years in the district, and I thank all my students, because not only did I teach them, but they taught me as well. And so, I also want to thank Mrs. Raven and Mrs. Tave, and they were my fellow Cheetah Girls, and if you see them, you can ask them about that. And I also would like to thank my family, my daughters, for always encouraging me, and my husband, my biggest supporter of 23 years. He saw me burning the midnight oil in college, and he's going to continue to see me burning the midnight oil as Anderson Elementary's new Assistant Principal, so thank you again.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Berry Elementary, Mr. Sean Sean attended Xavier University for Bachelor of Arts in Education, University of Texas at Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies, most recently an instructional coach at Patrick Elementary, has taught 5th and 6th Grade Science at Berry Elementary, and has also taught 8th Grade Science, and has been a team leader and a Science Department Chair in the past. Sean, congratulations.
President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity to continue to serve a community that I just, I care so much about. So HR didn't tell me, coming from junior high, that Berry was an elementary campus. I didn't, I didn't learn that until I pulled up for the first time. So I figured I'll stay here for a year, transfer to my arena, the junior high, and I continued to tell myself this for a couple of years, you know, this is my last year at Berry, this is my last year in elementary. So what kept me on the elementary campus? The amazing faculty, the administrators, the kids, the parents, the entire community. My administrators at Berry saw something in me, pushed me to pursue leadership. The most recent leader on campus, Tammy Rogers, acted as the, we'll say, mother hen and pushed me out of the nest. She encouraged me to pursue more leadership opportunities. I was thinking, are you getting rid of me? I mean, I love this place, but I could not have asked for a better place to land. My Patrick family stretched, encouraged, demanded that I grow quickly to become the member of the team that I needed to be. I'm so grateful to have been given the chance to work with such an incredible staff. That leadership team, along with the faculty, is completely committed to the work, and what's so special is that they're each other's biggest cheerleaders. I thank each of them for being dedicated to the work, the kids, and that campus. So to that Patrick family, if no one's told you today that I love you, I do, and I always will. Thank you for believing in me, and to my Berry family, thank you for welcoming me home in this new role. I look forward to doing great things for our kids, for our school, and for our community together. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Welcome to AISD. Congratulations to all three of y'all. As is our custom, if y'all would please follow Mr. Kell outside to the lobby so that we can come and greet you. We ask that everyone please let the board go first so we can return and get back to business. Board, I'm asking y'all to please return no later than 7:30. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public hearing, of which there is none. So we move next to our open forum for agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, are there any cards? Okay. Then we will move on to our action items. Item A, consider Tasby Board Policy Update 113. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and at this time, we would ask the board to consider adopting Tasby Policy Update 113. It has gone through the Governance Committee, multiple meetings, and we have presented as a discussion item to the board in the last board meeting, so at this time, we are up for an adoption of Update 113.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Walton.
I'm overly approved, Tasby Policy Update Number 113.
Do you have a second? Okay. So with the motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Chapa, are there any questions? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you very much, first of all, to Mr. Hill for helping to coordinate the Tasby Policy Board Updates. Also, Mr. Chapa for chairing our Governance Committee, thank you very much, and Ms. Walton and Dr. Rice, thank y'all very much for serving on the committee. Our next action item is consider recommendation to propose termination of continuing contract of Wanda Brunel. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and at this time, we are recommending to the board to propose termination of the continuing contract of Wanda Brunel.
Thank you, President Mays. At this time, I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation and to propose the termination of Wanda Brunel's continuing contract, and further move that the record of this action reflect the following. Before voting on this motion, the board considered a draft of the letter to Wanda Brunel proposing the termination of her contract and employment. The superintendent reviewed with the board the reasons for making his recommendation regarding Ms. Brunel, and the board considered the reasons and other information provided by the superintendent, and that by passage of this motion, the board hereby directs the superintendent to prepare for the board president's signature a final notice of proposed termination of contract and employment for Wanda Brunel, and ensure that the notice is delivered not later than September 27th, 2019. The board directs that the notice of proposed termination of contract and employment include the time limitations and procedure for requesting a hearing before an independent hearing examiner. The board also directs the board president to notify Eichelbaum, Wardell, Hanson, Powell, and Munoz, PC, of this action, and requests that the office, that office, to contact and retain an independent attorney on behalf of the board, if necessary, to advise the board concerning legal matters upon receipt of a recommendation from an independent hearing examiner. The board authorizes Eichelbaum, Wardell, Hanson, Powell, and Munoz, PC to consult with the superintendent to approve the final notice of proposed termination of contract and employment, and to take whatever actions are necessary and proper to present the case in support of the proposed termination. And finally, the board directs that a copy of this motion be attached to the minutes of this meeting, and the final notice of proposed termination of Wanda Brunel's contract and employment be sent to Wanda Brunel.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Willbanks. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Next on the agenda are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Okay. Seeing none. Dr. Cavassos.
Ms. Powell.
President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos, there's one bid on the consent agenda for your consideration this evening, and the administration is recommending the lowest bid that also represents the best value to the district.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Dr. Rice?
Move to approve consent.
Ms. Fowler?
I'll second.
Okay. So you have a motion by Dr. Rice, a second by Ms. Fowler. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Okay, moving. Next on our agenda are our discussion items. The first item for discussion is our Multidisciplinary Threat Assessment Team Update. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and we'd like to take this opportunity to share with the board an update on our Multidisciplinary Threat Assessment Team. And this is a unique opportunity for AISD in that we have assembled a strong team to consist of our threat assessment in the district, and to help in keeping our students and our staff safe in our buildings. And so, this is a partnership with Arlington Police Department and other agencies. This Multidisciplinary Threat Assessment Team is something that is important as we look to the safety and the security of all our staff and our students at all our buildings, and we know that that's an important responsibility. We also know that safety is not something that we talk about once, it's a continued effort, and it's an investment by a lot of staff in the district, but also by our Arlington Police Department and other agencies. Mr. Hill will lead that discussion and frame that for us. This is one component of our safety system across the district. Mr. Hill.
So good evening, President Mays, board members, and Superintendent Cavassos. Thank you for kind of setting the framework for this work here. We are talking about school safety in general, but more specifically about the Multidisciplinary Threat Assessment and just an update. As we try to do everything, we tie back to our strategic plan, and an emotionally, physically, and emotionally and physically safe learning environment is a critical component for the district reaching our goal of student achievement. And we do many, many things across this district to look at school safety, from weather drills to fire drills, and I won't read all of these, just a few of them, social media threats, app-based reporting, campus security staff, crime stoppers, and we coordinate with the police department and first responders on tabletop exercises and things of that nature. But tonight, what we're going to really focus on is this threat assessment. And so, in the big picture of all the school safety, a lot of things that are going on, tonight will be that focus. And so, what I'm going to do at this point, I'm going to step aside and turn it over to David Stevens, our Director of Security, and he's going to take us through the process of where we've been and where we are continuing to go with the threat assessment process for the district. So, David.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. I appreciate y'all, first of all, taking the opportunity here to listen to us and let us, you know, tell you about what we're doing, especially with this when it comes to the threat assessment. For those in the audience and for those watching at home, I am David Stevens, I am the Security Director, and I'm going to start in here with actual, what is a threat assessment? In its simplest form, it's what it sounds like. It is an assessment of an actual threat. So what it provides for us is an evidence-based approach, excuse me, toward identifying students or other individuals who pose a threat, intervening with appropriate resources, and ultimately improving the safety and well-being of the individual of concern, the situation, and the school. Obviously, we're an institution for education. Our job is to restore and reintegrate persons who may be struggling or having some issues, so it's a collaborative effort for us. Now, it's important to know what a threat assessment is, but it's also important to know what it is not. And first and foremost, it's not a simple checklist of warning signs or red flags used to remove a student from school. As I stated earlier, that's not what we want. We don't want to remove students. We want to basically rehabilitate, get students on the right path, and get them, and become productive citizens, and further their education, and enter the workplace. It is also not a means to label a student as a troublemaker or enact consequences. Again, we're not here to punish, we're here to help, and what this does is help provide them with resources that they may need during their life struggles. And lastly, it is not a means to find the next school shooter. You can read through different, it doesn't matter whether it's the Secret Service or whomever, there is no true profile of an active, you know, shooter. There is not one. It's many different things that come into play, and there's so many different nuances, so it's not something that's there to find the next school shooter. Now then, our team, as Mr. Hill stated, we have put together a very, very good team. I would like to, I'll fix to introduce, I would like to call them the Trio, as we like to say. There's three components of this. There's us at AISD, there's also Arlington Police Department, and then there's our Mental Health Liaison from MHMR. And from AISD, we have Dr. Neketchi Madueke. From Arlington PD, Jade Taylor. And then from MHMR, we have Kate Shaw. Okay. Now, what they are, we'll go back to the record, what they are, they are our Multidisciplinary Threat Assessment Team for the district. They are a district-level team. They will oversee our campus-level threat assessments teams, they will help coordinate our community resources and bring those together. They've already, and you'll see here in a minute, they've already been hard at work and have done many, many things, but think of them as the overseer of our threat assessment program. Now, each campus will have its own campus threat assessment team. So, Multidisciplinary Team, the MTAT, as we call it, that is the district level, and the CTAT is the campus, so campus-level threat assessment team. Each campus will have its own team. That's made up of the campus principal, assistant principal, school resource officer, if there is one there, the counselor, and then other staff members that may be present on campus and involved in the situation. Now, so kind of a visual, as we talked about, the MTAT, that is the overall overseeing group. They help, you know, we've got the three members of it, they are all encompassing, helping work with the campus level, they support the administrators, the counselors, behavior interventionists, they work with the SROs, they bring in those resources that we need and work together with them. Now, our goals. We obviously have goals. Create a plan to identify students of concern, assess their risk for engaging in violence or other harmful activities, and implement intervention strategies to manage that risk. You'll see here in a minute, I mean, it's overall threat assessment, there's four main parts that we focus on during this assessment. The MTAT is also going to oversee, train, and assist campus threat assessment teams, which the training has already begun for our staff members. Collaboration of district and community resources. While we have a lot of resources here in the district itself, we also utilize the outside resources that are available to us in the community. And then, hosting Multidisciplinary Resource Meetings. We have already hosted our very first one, and like I say, it was very well-attended, and, you know, it's very promising of what we have. So again, what have we done? We've already established the MTAT, the overall group, and that's going to be the Trio. We have threat assessment procedures have been created and communicated, and passed along to our campuses. The campus threat assessment teams have been identified and trained. We did host training and brought them in so that they could receive exactly what it is that we want to accomplish to this program. And then, the initial Community Resource Meeting was held with our community resources. So, how do we receive a threat? Well, it comes in in many ways. Social media, crime stoppers, parents, staff, it could come from any other students, law enforcement. We receive, you know, tips and information from many different avenues. So what happens whenever we receive a threat? Well, obviously, it's, and Dr. Madueke, if you'll come on up, when we receive these threats, obviously, we're going to have to look into it and investigate. So, as I mentioned a while ago, it's kind of a four parts that the assessment will focus on, so that we make sure that we identify everything. So, for this part, I'm going to turn it over to her and let her take it from here. Thank you very much.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for giving us this opportunity to present to you what we have been doing in the district and what we're moving forward with. Like Mr. Stevens said, I'm Dr. Madueke. I have been in the district for 16 years now, mainly as a school psychologist, and so, I was very excited to get this opportunity to work in this role, because in my previous role, we had, we got to work one-on-one with a lot of the students who tend to make this threat, and so, we recognized that there was a need that was not being fulfilled in the district for our students who tend to pose a risk of violence for others. And so, the threat, this process we have right now is based on the Texas School Safety Center's model, and it encompasses the four main parts. The first is identify where we're identifying basic information about the threat. We want to know what was the cause for concern, how did that concern come about, who was the primary person of concern. The next part is inquire, and that involves gathering all available information. It could be through interviews, it could be through record reviews. Interviews can be conducted with the student of concern, that student's parents, any possible witnesses, any staff members who know the student or can provide information about it, and basically, anyone else who's relevant to the investigation. The next part, assess, is the component, a lot of times when we hear assessment, this is what we're talking about as the Trio, and it's when we, it's the decision-making portion of the process. We discuss all the information that we've gathered that's available to us, and we make a determination of the category in which the threat best fits. The categories are used to indicate where on the pathway to violence a student's threat falls, and these are the steps and the pathways to violence. There are four steps. Again, this is taken from the Texas School Safety Center. The first is ideation, which is thinking about violence or conceiving of the idea. Many times, people have an idea of hurting someone, and usually, it's in response to an emotional trigger, and usually, once that emotion settles, the thought goes away. But sometimes, the ideation persists, and the individual might take that thought a step further, and they begin to make plans for how they will carry out that threat. They might gather information to use for the execution of their plan, but still, usually, they're just thinking about it, they're planning how they might do it. The next step, and which is one where we tend to be a lot more concerned, is preparation. By the time an individual gets to the preparation phase, they've had the idea for a long while, they've made some plans, they've identified or gathered whatever items they need to carry it out, they determine what situation would be ideal for carrying out the attack, and usually, at that point, they're just waiting for when they can implement their attack. Now, there's a red line between preparation and implementation, and that's because when they're at implementation, it's too late. They're carrying out the attack, people are being hurt, and there's not much we can do except to respond to the crisis. So our goal is to catch our students before they hit the red line. At that point, no one's hurt, they haven't begun to carry out acts of violence, we can still intervene at that point. And so, these are the steps on the pathway to violence. And again, our process, there are four parts to it. The first is identifying a possible threat and the person of concern, the next is gathering data, the next is determining what step the student might be at, and then, for us, the most important part is the management portion, and that is the response that we will put in place. For us, this is the most important part of the entire process, we're working with children. And so, identifying a threat and determining the level of concern mean very little to us if we, as an educational institution, will do nothing to turn our students away from violence. This is where we take all that information into consideration, and we determine what needs to be put in place or offered to the student in order to not only prevent the violence, but to put them on a path toward better self-management and better decision-making. It involves supports from multiple disciplines and possibly multiple agencies. It is tailored to each individual student's needs, and therefore, will look different from student to student and from situation to situation. The supports can be at the campus level, with campus personnel providing the interventions, it can be at the district level, incorporating supports from various departments within the district, or it could be at the family level where we are getting supports and resources from community agencies. Now, like Mr. Stevens pointed out earlier, we have had our inaugural meeting with community agencies. We had close to 50 people, these are some of the agencies that were represented. They came from different areas, including mental and behavioral health. They came from different areas, including mental and behavioral health, legal and law enforcement, and family services. They have communicated a desire to support our kids, our families, our campuses by providing needed resources when we call on them, and they have indicated a lot of enthusiasm for the partnership. It is a community approach, and the purpose is to provide wraparound services instead of leaving the district to carry the burden of helping our students in entirety. So we want to make sure we are addressing the needs of the whole child when we're developing responses and interventions. And now, I would love to turn it over to Lieutenant Baker.
Good evening, I'm Lieutenant Baker with Arlington Police Department. President Mays, Dr. Cavazos, and board members, thank you for allowing us to be here today to speak with you guys about the multidisciplinary threat assessment and what we are doing here as a team. So first, we're going to talk a little bit about how we, we got here. Senate Bill 11. Senate Bill 11 was prompted by Santa Fe school shooting. It revised for us the requirements for multi-hazard emergency operation plans. It requires the district to establish threat assessments team to incorporate best practices for schools and safety climate while focusing, focusing on social and emotional learning. It also establishes a school safety allotment for districts to help improve security and focus on physical and physiological safety. Senate Bill 11 also enhances our ability to provide a multi-phase, multi-hazard approach to prevention, mitigation, preparedness, and best responses in crisis situations. The multidisciplinary and multi-agency collaboration to assess risk and threats in schools, but also those that can transition from the community to the school environment. So, back in 2018, the City of Arlington received a grant from the COPS office with the support of the Arlington Independent School District and MHMR Tarrant County to take a team approach to bolster school security, educate and train students and faculty, and support law enforcement officers as first responders who arrive to school campuses to address violent incidents. The grant was authorized by the Stop the Violence Act, which is intended to improve school security by helping students and teachers reduce exposure to risk, prevent acts of violence, and quickly recognize and respond to violent acts. So with that being said, it was determined that an evidence-based multidisciplinary threat assessment team was crucial to school violence, and so we've utilized the 2018 COPS Office Stop the Violence Grant to address these needs. And with that grant, we hired three key staffs to put forth a multidisciplinary threat assessment team. So, thank you.
So, as, as we started this off, we wanted to, again, show that whole comprehensive approach to school safety, what we do as a whole, again, with tonight's focus being on that threat assessment process, and to just conclude with, as you've seen through this process, through this presentation, that school safety, it's comprehensive, and most of all, it's a collective responsibility. This is not a one person, we all have a, a part in this, in this ever-present need of school safety. And so we, we believe that this threat assessment team, in its very infancy, will, will help us get down that, that path of making sure that we're responding appropriately when we get those incidents. And so, that being said, the team is prepared to entertain any questions that we may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. Are there questions? Ms. Walton.
Thank you, President Mays. Fabulous, well-thought-through program, I love the collaboration of all these departments and different elements of our community. I'm excited about it, and so my question is, when do we start this, actually, using this, this instrument?
We've already started.
Yes.
We've already started, yes. The training took place right out the bat, and unfortunately, early on in the school year, we were receiving those unfortunate cases, and, and the process has already started.
Well, can you tell us how it's going? I mean, is it working like you thought it was, or?
It's, the, the training went well, the teachers, when we first started the training process, many of the, and Dr. Madueke, we did a exercise, her and the team did an exercise that asked the teachers, where, where are you mentally when thinking about a threat assessment or addressing a threat, initially before they had any training, and then they came back about maybe an hour and a half, maybe two hours into the process, and asked that same question. And there was this kind of movement from, I'm really not comfortable with this, to, okay, I understand it, I, I'm comfortable, comfortable with it, and I can, I think I can do this. They can give you more specifics about, well, we would try not to get into, into the specifics of the threats that we receive, but we can say that the, the process is working as, as it's been designed to work.
Thank you, that's great news.
Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. I'm curious about the grant, and just want to know, how long does that grant cover us through? And is, is there a likelihood that we'll be able to renew that grant? If not, are we making provisions to cover this in future budgets?
Lieutenant Baker talked about that, the, the district on our, on our part, we are, we've had that conversation, and I think we've had the conversation between all the agencies about continuing beyond, so.
Yes, the grant itself is a two-year grant, and we have collaborated on what we need to do to make the positions permanent moving forward. The one thing we looked at is, we started with what a grant allowed us to do, the state has now mandated it, so we're going to have to find those fundings to keep our folks in place and, and the MTAT going.
So it's great that you guys were ahead of the curve, and now we have something that meets our legislative requirements, so kudos to you guys for getting the ball rolling on this early, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any, I do. Dr. Rice.
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you to everyone for taking the time to give us this overview of, of the threat assessment process. It, it's great to see it come along as much as it has. Those that may not know, this is something that we initiated at the board level, myself, Dr. Cavazos, met with our police chief, county sheriff, county commissioner, and said, what can we all do to work together? We all have our individual plans, we need to coordinate, we must coordinate. And this was somewhere around the, I think it was right around the Parkland incident in Florida. And I just want to say thank you so much. I mean, the, the grant, obviously, is, is substantial, a substantial help. Appreciate our police department, our police chief for initiating that, and, and as he always does, own our community and making sure that we're safe here. And for those that don't know, our Director of Security, Mr. Stevens, is a former APD as well. I mean, we, we have nothing but excellence in, in relation with our collaboration and communication, and the mental health aspect of it is, it is so absolutely essential. So to see all this coordination from the local municipality, the district, the county level, it, it's, it's fantastic. And it's great to hear that it's working already. Unfortunately, it's been tested immediately. But I guess the only question that I have is, so our, our last meeting, we had a, a great, kind of beginning dive into our SEL, our social-emotional learning model and platform that, that really ties into this as, as one additional piece, albeit a significant piece. So this might be a little bit two nuts and bolts, but I was curious, how does that tie in as far as communication from, you know, in the classroom, the teachers, the students, with social-emotional learning support, then going to threat assessment? And do you have that communication? I, I would assume there's a protocol in place where it's, it's instant, because you're going to have to act in an instant in some situations.
So, if you will, the, if you'll recall back on that presentation on SEL and the presentation tonight, the one through line was Dr. Madueke, she was kind of serving in both camps, and, and it's for that reason, to make sure that we don't lose the social-emotional aspect of this threat assessment, and to make sure that the threat assessment aspect isn't lost in there. And so that's the through line, that, that's the reason for her placement in, in the area that she was.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Very good. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm so, so happy to see the, the collaboration, the coordination. It'll be, it'll be great to continue to expound on the successes of this program and, and be a model. I mean, SB 11 was great, but we were already working on this long before SB 11 was even thought of, and now that it is a requirement for other districts or all districts, I think it is something that is certainly valuable to make sure at the governor's level that his office is aware of what we are doing here as a community, as Arlington ISD, and maybe can be essentially a benchmark for others as well. So, thank you.
Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Mason. Dr. Rice, you, you mentioned some of the points that, that I wanted to just summarize a little bit. First and foremost, I think this board continues to challenge us to exceed compliance. And I think when we see Senate bill and things like that, our task is to exceed that, and that's why we were ahead of the game and, and things like that. The other point is the social-emotional learning, I was going to bring that up in terms of a context for board presentations and what you've engaged and have a deep dive in, even from last board meeting. One informs the other, and it builds a foundation so that we have an environment with our students and our campuses so that these threats are reported, number one, but that we have a system of intervention. And you heard of, of a system of intervention with social-emotional learning, you heard of a system of intervention now with the threat assessment. And I think that's the value of this collaboration. It's intentional work, and I, I commend everyone involved in it, I sat through some of the training, and exceptionally done. APD commitment to this project and, and working together with us is, is exceptional. Last point I'll make is that, as we continue to develop programs and interventions and things like that, we challenge ourselves as a team to have a high level of excellence. And so what you see tonight by the commitment of the individuals and the people that spoke, and the people behind the scenes, is a level of excellence, excellence to meet the needs of our students and to make sure that they're safe, first and foremost, but that they have an environment with our teachers and our staff where they can do their best work. So I want to thank the, the entire team, our collaboration with MHMR and APD as well. But those are some points that you began that summary, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Thank you very much to our AISD Security Department, thank you Arlington PT, thank you Mental Health, our liaison, thank you very much for your participation. I like the fact that we always try to lead by example for our students, and we tell them if they see something, say something. So if we see a need, we need to do what we can to fill that need, and that's exactly what you're doing, and we really appreciate it. I see no other lights, thank you very much, Mr. Hill. Okay, next on our agenda is another discussion item. That's the briefing of the 86 Texas Legislature, Regular Session and Legislative Issues Impacting Public Education. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Mason. This time, we'd like to have a briefing of our most recent legislative session. I'll ask Cindy Powell to start us off, but we also have been joined by David Anderson from Hillco, our consultant, who, a briefing on legislative affairs wouldn't be the same without a David Anderson, so thank you for being here, David, and ahead of time. And so I'll turn it over to Cindy for introductions, and then we'll keep going.
Thank you. So President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavazos, good evening. As you well know, the 86 legislature met in regular session this past spring. They came together in January, they met 140 days, and they adjourned on May 27th. There were over 7,300 bills that were filed during the session, about 20% of which passed. Arlington ISD has become very active over the last several years in advocating for positions that, and issues that are important to our district and our students. So this year was no different. The board adopted a legislative agenda last November. We worked with our legislative consultants, Hillco partners, to communicate our positions and our issues to our delegation and to other legislators as appropriate. The Board Governance Committee and the board as a whole have a very active role in the session, and we, we discussed in these meetings legislative updates all throughout the spring. But David Anderson with Hillco Partners is with us this evening to provide his perspective, a kind of a wrap-up of the, the 86 session. What we always know is that the real work and really follows after a legislative session ends in terms of implementing the numerous bills that were passed during session and interpreting the impact of those and actually placing them into effect, just like you heard with the last presentation even. So I, I want to thank David for his work on our behalf, along with his colleagues, Kate, Kate Coolman, Tom Webster, and Buddy Jones, in particular with Hillco Partners. They, they do a wonderful job in keeping us informed about legislation and the different implications of that legislation, and then helping us communicate our position on various bills and issues throughout the session. So with that, I'm going to ask David to, to come to the mic.
Thank you. President Mays, trustees, Dr. Cavazos, Cindy, thank you. Before I start on this, I would be absolutely remiss in not noting that it's only been sixteen weeks since the session adjourned, signed, and died, sixteen weeks last night. Hearing the presentation on what you have done with security is amazing. I'm a big process guy. I think process is so important in driving quality programming, and agency coordination is not something that is easy. If you do it right, it is very hard, and to see the agencies that are working with you on the issues related to Senate Bill 11. Dr. Rice, you mentioned this is something people in Austin should be aware of. You did have a head start on it, but what you're doing really is a model for other districts, particularly mid-sized and larger districts around the state who have to work with a variety of local government agencies. So congratulations to you for your leadership on that. Cindy, I think this is what I need, isn't it? Thank you. So let's take a few minutes to look at where we were, what occurred, and where we are now. And if you look back to the start of the session, sixteen weeks ago, it ended, twenty weeks prior to that, it began, so it hasn't really been that long. Your three objectives had to do with local control, and I think you're absolutely right, local control produces stronger policies and programs, relevant instructional programs, suitable funding for mandated state requirements should be required. These are the three operating points with which we worked. Then you had specific issues underneath that, academic accountability, school finance, the qualified education workforce, that so much time was spent on this session, local control, school choice, pre-kindergarten, mental health and school safety, and you get a lot of checks on what you wanted to accomplish this session. I'd like to start with academic accountability because I think in my career, and this is the beginning of my 47th year to work in public education, I started teaching fifth grade in Austin in 1973. For the better part of my career, the most complicated issue that trustees had to deal with was cheerleader, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't, it was school finance. In the last ten years, I would argue that the most complicated and complex issue you deal with is school accountability. And fortunately, you have some excellent human resources here, the envy of districts across the state to work with on these issues. We identified the bullet points that shows, quick summary of what you had hoped to accomplish this legislative session. In the column on the right, you'll notice that authority to address low-performing schools with the locally-elected board was not addressed. There was a lot of attention to that, there was much discussion, but in the end, that really wasn't addressed. The A3F rating system or clearly-defined performance. Well, that's happening, but that's happening really through administrative code rule, not through legislation. And I would argue that as you look ahead to '21, this is something that becomes important. It is symptomatic of a larger concern, and that is administrative code rule that perhaps doesn't line up with statutory expectations on a one-to-one basis, and I think that's something we've talked about and we want to talk about again. Designing the system in a manner that appropriately recognizes demographic... a manner that appropriately recognizes demographic variables, that was addressed. And as you look at this notion of a spectrum weight for our low SES kids to identify where the greatest impact may be and increased funding for those students, this has been a hallmark of House Bill 3 and a very significant part of that legislation. You can look on down the SSI retention provision not addressed, the provision for the individual graduation requirements, something that you have been involved with significantly for several sessions. This time, we were not able to get the full implementation, the comprehensive permanent implementation. However, we did get a four-year extension, not a two-year extension. And a lot of credit for that goes to the House of Representatives that pushed for that. It was on the Senate side, specifically Lieutenant Governor Patrick, who said he wasn't ready to endorse a permanent fix on that. So we got the four years. And then the expansion of the industry-based certifications addressed very positively. School finance, the big issue. We can't talk about House Bill 3 without recognizing that it was joined at the hip with Senate Bill 2, the property tax bill. So school finance really is both of those. Property tax bill, we've given you a quick highlight of some of the things that happened there. The big issue, I think, for you going forward is going to be the sustainability of the property tax compression at the state level and what that will mean going forward. As values increase, the demand for more funds to keep that compression level consistent will exist. I think that's something that we must be talking to our delegation about, not just here in Arlington, but across the state. And it's really time to begin talking about that sustainability. We're very proud of House Bill 3. We're pleased that legislators get to take that victory lap because they did some pretty amazing things in it. But now it's time, I think, to begin to look forward at what this will mean. House Bill 3 is landmark legislation, as I was just mentioning. I think it's important to remember that this legislation passed in regular session without a Supreme Court gun to the head of the legislator saying, you need to do something about this. It was done with a new speaker, someone who completely inexperienced in that leadership role, and it addressed public ed and property tax relief in a significant way, $5.5 billion in new funding to public schools, restructuring a number of things that have some positive aspects, but also have some negative. The move to current year values is troublesome for a lot of districts, for example. What was done with the cost of education index was troublesome to some districts, but overall, very positive legislation. I think that when we look back five to eight years from now at this, and you look at the impact on Arlington, certainly that spectrum weight for low SES kids is going to be one of many things that stand out. House Bill 3 is 310 pages long. And if you would all commit to giving me two hours for four days a week for the next 48 weeks, we'll go through that bill completely. And our hats are off. We can be very critical of TEA on some issues, but our hats are off to TEA for all they are doing to provide information and direction on implementation on this very comprehensive bill. Several points specific to things that have been important to Arlington, I wanted to mention. The basic allotment, obviously, the increase there, increased weights for dyslexia and dual language, particularly for dyslexia. I think that is going to be significant for our large urban and mid-urban districts going forward. The SPED Advisory Committee was created. Hopefully, that prevents some of the circumstances that we have seen surrounding state public ed policy and practices in the last three years from occurring again, which districts have been left, in essence, holding the bag for some decisions that were made at the state level. The CTE and technical tech apps courses, the expansion there and the move to combine those two areas in the administrative code has some very positive implications, particularly for Arlington, where you have such a robust program in both of those areas. And then additional program funding, very small print. We're just checking to make sure that you're doing your vision screening and keeping up with that. The dual language incentive, I wanted to mention that and provide some information. You know the bilingual education allotment remained the same. However, the dual language incentive did add a .5 weight to the bilingual allotment. And there is additional weight for certain programming that is done in school districts. We will see more agency guidance and support on this. You know, this sort of falls in that category of the two great lies of public education. The first one is when Dr. Cavassos gets that on the door and the person says, hi, I'm from TEA and I'm here to help. And of course, the second great lie is when Dr. Cavassos says, man, am I glad to see you. There will be more agency. Took a minute on that one, didn't it? One of the other areas that is significant is post-secondary readiness, particularly college, career, military readiness, the baseline threshold that will be established based on the 2020 district data. Determining the CCMR is still ahead of us. One of the things that we talked about in the earlier in our conversation is that this is an issue that I hope you will dedicate some time and energy with in the interim because this is being defined. It's an area in which particularly military readiness, our school districts, the expectation has not been there to pay a lot of attention to that before. Now that it is, and we're paying more attention, we're discovering that there's a lot of data here that can help us better understand where our kids are and where they're going, but also help us with our accountability ratings. We're going to see those numbers go up. My concern is that there will be organizations, policy groups in Austin who will look at that and say, there goes those darn school districts and those trustees gaming the system again. We've got to make sure we do this right and we work with our delegation during the interim to ensure that any changes going forward statutorily are thoughtful and not driven by a knee-jerk reaction to a brighter light shining on this data. Pathways, there were several bills that relate to this notion of what happens with college, career, military readiness as kids are coming out of our high schools and moving into community colleges, four-year colleges, the military and careers. Senate Bill 25, which has to do with credit, the common admission application, Senate Bill 1276 with dual credit agreements, very important to you because of all you're doing with dual credit and your coordination with UT Arlington, Tarrant County College. And then Senate Bill 504, the Texas ON course, relates back to what you heard earlier from Michael and from the group with regard to social emotional learning, the indicators of behavioral issues. So these are a few of the bills that I wanted to highlight for you. One of your objectives was the qualified education workforce. Back to Senate Bill 3 for a second, the teacher pay increase, how that structured. I understand that you can go back and sign up for graduate class and how to assign those salary increases. It's only a three-hour credit course, so it won't take you that long to figure out all of the complexities of this particular part of the bill. The teacher incentive allotment, the funding for the mentor school teachers are all very important related to your broader issue of that qualified workforce. But specifically, we know that was tied to your interest in AISD's pilot with TRS to look at what you're doing with your benefits program. And of course, there was no legislation for that. That is a positive work in progress. And of course, you know much more about that. We won't spend any time with it now, other than to say that we'll do whatever we can do to help Scott and the district as those conversations continue with the TRS staff. Local control was one of your topics. The tax ratification election is one area in which I feel there was some erosion of local control because now you're going to have to have efficiency audits before you're able to call for your tax ratification elections. The efficiency audit information is work in progress. We can look to January of 2020 and expect to see the efficiency audit recommendations from the Legislative Budget Board. They're working on that. They've had some feedback from a number of the organizations you're part of, including Tasbe, Texas School Alliance, Fast Growth Schools, TASBO, for example. When you hire the independent auditor to conduct that efficiency study at some point in the future, that auditor will have to follow the guidelines that are being developed right now by LBB. There was some legislation that expanded ballot language and with Senate Bill 3 and House Bill 47, some notice requirements. I will tell you, because we worked on those bills in a very significant way, they started out as very troublesome pieces of legislation, but with help from Texas Municipal League, TASSA, Tasbe, I think that we moved those bills in a much better direction. So are there a few more requirements there? Yes, but most of those are issues that you're going to be able to address without committing a lot of additional resources. 440, the general obligation bonds issues is one that, again, that I believe strikes at the issue of local control in a negative way. And that's something that I think we ought to look at as we move to the next session. State mandate relief, which is specifically mentioned in your documents, was given lip service, I believe. There were a few things that we saw some relief, but overall, the notion of mandate relief that so many people run on going to legislature, let's free the hands of the trustees and superintendent, not a lot was done with that this session. School choice, however, something that has been a significant part of your agenda. Arlington is a district of choice. What we did not want to see was diversion of public funds to private institutions. And of course, that did not occur. The districts of innovation provisions specifically related to local authority to determine start date and end dates, there was a very heavy push to eliminate that as an option within districts of innovation. That did not pass. And that was overwhelmingly defeated in the House of Representatives, something that we were very pleased with, the comprehensive work that was done by a lot of organizations with that. Charter expansion authority was neither reduced nor expanded. In essence, there was a stalemate this session. There was some significant policy positions taken by a coordinated group that included statewide teacher organizations, Tasbe, and superintendent-led groups to basically keep that neutral ground this session. That's a group that we'll continue to watch and work with. I believe they're going to have some strong policy recommendations that will speak very specifically to the ability of charter schools to expand without any sort of state review, particularly review by an elected body such as the State Board of Education. Quality full-day pre-K programs, the House Bill 3 mandate was passed, eligible four-year-olds are now covered. There is an early education allotment. This is not consistent with what you've asked for, which is that formula funding, but it's a significant step towards that and a topic that I believe you should look at in the interim and talk with our delegation about to look at moving toward a formula funding basis for that. We do have some restrictions or some requirements there, including use of the commissioners' guidelines for pre-K. You know, at the state level, there's no authority for essential knowledge and skills for pre-K. So we have commissioner guidelines. They've always been advisory. This means now that they're going to become requirements. You can look on down with progress monitoring, the teacher quality, the teacher ratio, program evaluation. These are all requirements that are built in there. Many of these things you're already doing, districts around the state are doing. It is sound policy, but the direction now is coming from the state rather than from you to the superintendent. And then consistent with what you heard earlier, House Bill 18, the mental health teacher training, this is a great example of what will probably be a four-session play. We saw legislation in '17 that began the better coordination of education policy at the state level with mental health policy. That continued with House Bill 18. The primary driver of this legislation, Representative Fore Price from Amarillo, has said that they're not done yet. They didn't get everything that was needed and will be back. They did get some funding for our regional service centers to have someone in the centers serve as that nexus for what you saw tonight with your school safety, mental health support, along with other public agencies to work with school districts on this. So very positive legislation. There are some training requirements. The service centers will help with that. So, the quick run through the 140 days, now we have 16 months before the legislature comes back to town. What should you be thinking about? Well, I would argue that there are six things. One, we do have an election cycle coming up. And this will be our first election cycle in Texas in a long time without straight party voting. That will have an impact on the lower ballot elections. There are a lot of people who will come in and they'll vote at the top one or two and they won't go all the way down. And that does have some implications for who does serve in the House of Representatives and in the Senate in Austin. We do have 10 constitutional amendments up in November. We have redistricting in the next session. And when we look back and see House Bill 3 this session, redistricting next session, President Mays, the idea that we would see a comprehensive education bill next session, I think the probability is pretty slim. We'll see some cleanup. We'll see some targeted bills, but a major comprehensive education bill next session is very unlikely. We do have a sunset process. And the teacher retirement system is under sunset in this next cycle. TEA was bumped out to 2026. The regional service centers were removed. The requirement that they go through sunset was repealed. TRS will be the one I think that you'll be interested in watching. And then we have TAC rulemaking. We did talk about this earlier. Monitoring the rulemaking is as important now as monitoring legislation in the session was three to four sessions ago. Because what we're seeing now are rules being promulgated that contain language that was in bills that did not pass. And we see things like two Ds equaling an F. And where that statutory requirement is, I have yet to find. I don't think it exists. However, the commissioner has been given rulemaking. Commissioner Morath is someone who is very dedicated to education reform, and he's using all of the tools that have been given to him by the legislature to craft administrative code rules that drive a lot of our decision-making with regard to accountability and to some extent with school finance. So that's something that we'll be talking to you about with regard to how we can help monitor that in a more consistent way between now and the next legislative session. Interim charges, if you look at past circumstances, generally those are released in September and October. We probably have a few more days to affect what will come out in the interim charges. The most significant interim charge will be the monitoring of the implementation of House Bill 3. And that, well, that may end up being the last item on their list. I would argue that it's probably going to be the most important item and one that perhaps was the deciding factor in House Public Ed Chairman Dan Hubert's decision to run for reelection, something I think we all benefit from. We have a very full team at Hillco. You heard references to some of them earlier. In addition to Kate Coolman, who's here with me earlier tonight, Todd Webster, our former deputy commissioner at TEA, Dee Carney, I would argue perhaps the best person not working in a school district on public school accountability in Texas and equal to many of the ones in our top school districts, Eve Myers, Trish Bodie, member of the Board of Trustees, and Leander ISD, who does our communications, and then Buddy Jones. I'd be glad to answer any questions or take any notes that you might like us to follow up with. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to come up and spend some time with you. And we absolutely are appreciative of the confidence you have in Hillco Partners. And we have thoroughly enjoyed working with you, with the people who came before you on the Board of Trustees we work with, with Dr. Cavassos and his staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Trustees, are there any questions, comments? Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Really appreciate the overview. And yeah, it'll be interesting to see what happens moving into the next session with redistricting being a key focus. Yeah, we're not going to see a lot, but hopefully we can turn a little bit around the edges. With that, as you said, the rulemaking process is what is really where the meat and potatoes is on the implementation of all these things. And we know from past experience, recent experience, that the commissioner hasn't really been forthcoming in advance in inviting in input to this process. We've been in a very reactive stance. Do you see in your crystal ball, if you will, any potential for that to change, any more inclusiveness on the front end? And I say that because we spent, and Dr. Cavassos, to your credit, spent so much time and energy with our commissioner, educating him on some of those, lack of a better term, poor implementation and process that now they're going back. And he's like, oh, yeah, you're right. You're right. You're right. So was there any lessons learned, do you think, any possibility for us to be able to navigate in there to prevent those types of things from not necessarily completely occurring, but hopefully to mitigate something?
I'm looking forward to a more positive circumstance for several reasons, Dr. Rice. One of them is we see a bit more stability on the agency staff. If you look back to when Commissioner Morath took over, he brought in a completely new slate of senior cabinet members and all of them very smart, very dedicated people, but none of them had experience managing significant programs at the school district level. And those that had And those that had significant program experience at either a state or a national level, they weren't in Texas. You know, we're a unique state. I know it sounds a little egocentric, but it does seem to me that when you're picking someone to do something, you either want them to know that program area very well, or you want them to know Texas very well and be smart enough to pick it up. Well, they were all smart people, but there was a steep learning curve, and several of them, as you know, have moved on. One moved on to become the state superintendent in Tennessee. We see more stability there. He has brought in two people who have been superintendents in smaller school districts into senior staff roles, including one as a deputy commissioner. And what I have seen is a more significant effort by staff to reach out and talk to stakeholders to say, this is what we're thinking about, how would this play out? So I think there are some indications with, I do want to be respectful of Commissioner Murath, because he is someone who sat in the same chair that the six of you sit in right now in Dallas ISD at a time when that board was perhaps the most dysfunctional board in the state of Texas. And he has a strong sense of what he would like to see happen to result in greater student performance and greater learning by students. It's, again, back to that notion of process. I believe the process is one that should involve significant stakeholder engagement, not just email surveys, but actual conversations. And I think that we're seeing more of that now that he has three years of experience in that office. He's done an amazing job with the implementation of a very complex bill in House Bill 3. And I think they did a commendable job of prioritizing what should be done first. I think you saw it here. When that bill passed, you're about to approve a budget, and there were not fewer uncertainties, there were more uncertainties as a result of that legislation. The agency staff moved pretty quickly to say, the first thing we're going to look at is helping you with budget questions. And their House Bill 3 and 30 series is pretty amazing. For every 30-minute episode we see, I'm sure there are several hundred hours that go into preparing that by a lot of staff members. So would I like to see greater stakeholder engagement? Absolutely. I think the trend line is positive.
That's great.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. It's good to hear, and yes, Commissioner Murath has done great things in trying to put in positive reformations. And so, yeah, hopefully that trend will continue. Thank you, as always, for your expertise, and I look forward to the partnership in developing our interim legislative agenda and working with our local delegation on that education piece to get them teed up for the next session. And then I suppose your job is always interesting, going to be even more interesting with all of the, what seems to be, I guess it's slowed just a little bit now, but what seem to be the daily announcements of the retirements in our legislature. So I know that's going to be, open up a completely new can of worms, challenges, opportunities, et cetera, so.
Well, we met earlier today with someone who sits in your chair in Lewisville ISD, who has announced that she's running for the House of Representatives and will challenge incumbents. So not only will we see retirements and resignations, three resignations already, which is unusual. Not only will we see that, we'll see a lot of challenges from Democrats against Republicans, Republicans against Democrats, and Republicans against Republicans, and Democrats against Democrats in the primaries. The two parties sort out their ideological identities. So it will be, if you like politics, this is a great time to be in Texas.
Get your popcorn.
Get your popcorn.
Well, I just hope that whatever the ultimate outcome for us is that it's education-friendly, because our children deserve it, our state economy depends on it, so.
Absolutely, and I think you all deserve, you ought to be able to do your victory lap as well, because I think your work with your local delegation has been absolutely commendable. I think that you have had had a positive impact on everyone at some point on certain pieces of legislation regarding education. The two bills that Chris Turner passed related to accountability are a great example of what you have done and what the administration has done, because not only did Chris carry that, his staff worked so closely with Kevin and others, but every one of your delegation bought into the importance of that and did what they could to help. And there are a lot of school districts that would look at their delegations and say, wish we could get our five members or our six members together on a bill the way the Arlington group got together on those bills and on many others. Not on everyone, but on a lot of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I just, I have just a few comments, and a lot of it I will save for our discussions about the interim legislative agenda going forward. I'm really interested to see what happens with the administrative code items that you mentioned, and I have been talking about local control since I've been on this board and have been worried about how Austin handicaps our ability sometimes to make meaningful change at the local level. And it was eye-opening to me, being on the Governance Committee this time and going through the legislative session in some detail, and seeing exactly to what extent Austin is going sometimes to make it difficult for us to do our jobs and then turn around and blame us for all sorts of things. For, not to downplay that a lot of good came out of the session, but that was one of the most eye-opening things for me through this legislative session. I just wanted to take a minute, having gone through that experience, to thank you and your staff. We sometimes get questions as trustees, and this was something that came up. There were a couple bills in the ledge this time around that would have prevented us from hiring individuals like you and your group to advise us on all of the stuff going on in Austin. And anybody who spends more than five minutes with this stuff knows how complicated it is. There's maybe a few people in the state who understands a couple of aspects that make a great deal of difference to the job that we do here, including school finance. And I was very appreciative, appreciative as we went through the legislative session with our weekly calls with you. You kept us updated on all of the bills that were pending. You gave us great insight into the things that were going on, and that helped us, even as local school board trustees in Arlington, Texas, I feel like make a difference down in Austin, and make our voice heard. I think I was surprised to also see to what extent it's a little unusual for school districts to play the role that we played. I mean, we sent in letters for pieces of legislation and saw meaningful change because of the voice that we expressed on some issues. We didn't get our TRS bill through, but it was, we never would have had a shot, I don't think, if we had had your advice on how to couch that, how to introduce it in the legislature and go meet and discuss those items with our local delegation. And that is a topic that I think the ledge is aware of now, and it's going to, we're going to see some change on that hopefully in 2021. But I think it's in no small part due to the efforts of this board and with your advice that we're in a position to be able to make some change on that front. I just wanted to, again, say thank you. I found the counsel you gave to be insightful and look forward to working with you as we develop our interim legislative agenda and go through it again in the next legislative session.
Thank you. I'm very fortunate. I love what I do, and working with you has been a big part of that. Thank you for your compliment.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Will Banks.
I just want to echo what my colleague, Mr. Chapa, mentioned. This is my first time down in Austin, actually right before I stepped up to the dais here in Arlington, and it was eye-opening. And I want to profusely thank you for showing me the ropes and making sure I didn't make it full of myself my first time down. You know, and as Mr. Chapa said, I won't repeat what he said, but I'll echo that it was very helpful, and given our legislative agenda and our ambitious legislative agenda, I don't think we could have achieved what we achieved without your help. As Mr. Chapa says, you know, there's no way, you know, someone like me who works a full-time job and then comes here at night because I have nothing better to do for free.
I was about to say, it's the big salary, right?
Yeah, yeah. It makes it hard to be in front of our local delegation to push through. They affect what we do up here as trustees in so many ways, so profoundly, and we have to help try to steer that in the right direction. And thanks to your help, I think we were able to. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that your presentation was awesome, especially for its use of burnt orange throughout.
Thank you.
It was very appreciated.
It's easy for me.
Right, Mercedes? So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I almost liked him. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Walton.
Excuse me, thank you, President Mays. Just one quick, very heartfelt thank you so much, David Anderson, for all of your leadership and support of the seven, eight of us who have been involved in the trenches with you down in Austin with the legislature. You never know what's going to happen down there, but you have a pretty good idea, usually, and some wonderful instincts for what may be coming around the corner. So we appreciate that so much, and we look forward to working with you and your group for a long, long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I see no other lights. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. We really appreciate you coming back and doing what you do so well and keeping us abreast of what's going on. I do want to say thank you very much for past legislature, for future legislation coming up. It was very nice that we were able to have our superintendent, our CFO, other top staff members going down to Austin consistently, having you down there, us trying to get down there as much as we can, but still, we still needed some insight, and you did provide that. And I think for me, what it makes me wonder is for all those very, very important issues that do not get an opportunity to be tapped to the individuals who can make change down there in Austin. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity to understand and have our voices heard, even for things that may not have gotten passed that we are talking about. As Mr. Chapa said, we've started that conversation, and I doubt that we will stop. So thank you very much for that. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay, next on our agenda, open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any cards?
No, we have no cards.
No cards? Okay, moving on, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Mays. A brief amount of information here. Eleven of our Arlington Collegiate High School students were awarded a combined $9,500 in College Board Opportunity Scholarships. You see some of the pictures there of our students and our staff. These students are working on completing the six important steps on their path to college. We want to thank all the staff at Arlington Collegiate High School and the students for their outstanding work. Our community showed up big on September 7th for our annual Operation Graduation Walk, where we encouraged students who were not enrolled or were enrolled last year but not returned to come back. We nearly had 210 volunteers visit 220 homes that day. And so, thank you, Wendy Carrington, for your coordination of this. She's our dropout prevention department coordinator. Bailey Junior High celebrated its 50th anniversary last week, inviting alum back to celebrate with students at a pep rally and a football game. Former principals were invited. Current principal Tiffany Benavides did an outstanding job with her staff, putting on the 50th anniversary celebration. Finally, encourage everyone to note that we have Explore Arlington ISD event for families this October, I'm sorry, September 21st at the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center, and we hope to see you there. The event is from 9:00 AM to noon, and people and families can come learn about our specialized programs and our school district. Thank you to our communications staff and academic staff for putting this together. That concludes my report.
Very nice. Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Any trustees have any reports? Okay, seeing no lights. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
I do not believe we do. Thank you for asking.
You are welcome. So at this time, we're going to go into closed meeting. The Board of Trustees on September the 17th, beginning at 8:46, will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act for the topics set forth in the agenda. Thank you.